Devamdeye janathodu vandirukkara ovur aathumavudhu devamdeye vaartai ennepesavirumbukaradu
The what what is the word of God talk to you the people those who approach in the morning Those all come here with with great eager
Indha kaale velile kattar tannayappudi velipuddutavirumbukaradu
How the Lord God want to just reveal himself today morning
Indha kaale velaila avarkai gudukum dayvamaga namadeyamathile vandirukkara
As in the morning is the Lord is going to give you a help
Ha namadey esu kai gudukum dayvan
Our God is a God gives his hand
Har viswasi kirulalang karangalivithu ralaliya soluvaam
Those who believe let us all raise our hand
Priyamanaule namadey kattantha kaala valkayi naam kannaoki paarukumbildhu Aandavarkai gudutha padinaal than namudey awalvivilavu sarapaha amandirukkara
Believer when we look into the fast life of them because the Lord God had given a help Our life card means this much level increase
Am adu unmayindu solugunga kailaivitha ralaliya solugunga bakala
Those who say it is yes
Aandavarkai gudukaavital naam ivilavu uduravandirukave mudiyaa
If not the Lord God did not give his hand we couldn't achieve this much
Ha indike ulagathale manidhirukkal manidhirukka kai gudupadey ilai
Today even the people the human being did not do not help the other human being
Indha kai gudutallanu neenidu pathavunne shakkanugudukarana adacholla virumbavila
I don't want to just tell you about how after seeing the some people you will be shaking shaking the hands
Ha adu ondiyamaatuvu velai
That is a cheating work
Anaal kai gudukkaru enbadu vilundu vana manidhanai avarkai
Three we were fallen
Ulagam manidhirukkal namakkukai gudukavillai
The wealthy people they did not give a help to us
Namudey oravinirukkal kai gudukavillai
Our relative they did not give their hands
Namudey sondangal kai gudukavillai
Our relative they did not show their hands to us
Parents gudan namakkukai gudukavillai
Even our own parent they did not help us
Ningal ungelde karpa parapana pilligal gudan ungelukka kai gudukamalindru parak
Even your own children those who born from your home they may not have given help to you
Oru velai devamdeye karam ungelukka veliyarangamaha neetappada ungelukka tinbadamalirundaalu Avadi adarsanamana karam than ungalay andhassunalilindhu tapuvi thu indriki indhanelavathukku kondu vandirukkara
Perhaps either the shown hand the rest such hand of the law may not be visible on you The invisible hand of the Lord God just lifted you up and brought you this this much level
Indha anubhavate oru velai ningal viswasi kirulalio illio naanadenu uttukunnuoru viswasi kirala
Perhaps whether you are believing this incident or experience or not I believe that it's sent person
Indha markathuku varugirukku munbahaave naam kai vidapattavarkai
Before we come to this way we are we just forsaken people
Yathanyo wallamegal namakkukai gudukavillai
Many powers they did not help us
Anaal dayavan namakkukai gudutha
But the Lord God took us
Indikey naam paarukumbildhu
When we read here
Ebrayir irundu padunnaarle avarkai deva duddurukka kai gudamal aamrakam in sandadiki avarkai gudukkara
Here when we read about the Lord God took not on the nature of the angel but he took the seed of Abraham
Enakkukai gudutha enavalkila konjina stepla munyeririve abidingra oru adangathodu ningal ukandhrukkala
You might have seated with a great and then enthusiastic if you give one hand I can be just lifted up in my
Enne konjam businessla thukivutana developaiyavan neenikkenjikundru kala
You may be just working if the Lord God lift me in my business I will be just be developed
Anani munyeru virumbukarade avargal virumbukaradilai
But he does not like whether you want to be a progress
Ningal tirumbiththirundinade avargal nambukaradilai
They don't like whether you are being just a return
Ungalay thungappaduthuravol than adigamai irukkara
People those are more to be it will treat you
Ha indriki dayavan onakkay kai gudukkara dayavan
Today our God is a God to take you hand
Ha manidhanukka kai gudukum mudiyagathan avarkai create chedha
Only he is working to give hands and to the man
Priyamanaule ningal vedathin adipadail paarukumbildhu
Believer when you see on the basis of the word of God
Deva duddurulum vilundharakal manidhirukkalum vilundharakal
Even the angels of God as well as the human being they were full
Ha deva duddurulum vilundha oru kaalam undu
Even though there is as a period the angels of God they were fallen
Indikey naam pisasayindu chulugrame avargal yaar
Today we are calling us devil's who are they
Satthanindu chulugrame avargal yaar
We are calling them as Satan who are they
Pisasayindu chulugrame avargal yaar
We are calling them as devil who are they
Pollangerindu chulugrame avan yaar
Who is the wicked one we call
Apollionindu chulugrame avan yaar
Who is an Apollion what we call
Adigalaayin maganagi vidi viliindu chulugrame avan yaar
We are calling the son of the morning so who is that one
Inno rubugil luciferindu chulugrame avan yaar
In another angle we are calling us Lucifer who is he
Keroopindu chulugrame avan yaar
We are calling us Keroop who is he
Sodanikaranindu chulugrame avan yaar
We are calling him as a tempter who is he
Palaya bombun chulugrame avan yaar
Who is he we are calling as a old serpent
Thiridanindu chulugrame avan yaar
Who is he one who is a stealer
Poikupidaindu chulugrame avan yaar
Who is he one we call him as the father of the light
Ippidi pisasukum vilundu vana thoodanukun satthanukku ippidi oru listu kudidide pola
Likewise we can go and give a great list for the fallen angel as well Satan
Anaal evenai devan uruakki vaitirundara
Whether the Lord God whether they created them
Appadiyalla
It is not so
Ulagathale soluva yendakkulandayim perakkumbodhu nalakulandhey thanne
The world they may say whatever the child when they born they are very good child
Adu bolad devamdeye sister bill thoodanum nalavanay
So in the creation of God even the angels are also a good one
Avanukkullae perumay vandavan vilundha buludhu avan satthan indra rithile maachappadu
When they got the pride in him and when they were fallen they have changed into Satan
Oray vitlarendu pillagai
There are two children in one house
Ilayavan ellavatim gunduboy aalithu avan ilayakkumarane ellavatal ketta kumarane alakappata
The younger one gave to all the things and destroyed everything he was called as the youngest and other prodigal son
Adhe tagupundey pillaidhan anaal avan pantrikalodu varar aramikira
Even the he is also the son of the same father he was living with the pigs
Adhalandha satthanindu chulugavan yaaran disonnal devanay thudikum mudiyage devanay aaradikum mudiyage Devanay magimipuddutumudiyage devanay pannindukulumudiyage erupaduthappattadan thoodan than vilundha buludhu Satthan indra avan alakappata
The angel of God when he has fallen he was also just created to worship the Lord and bow down Lord as well as he wanted to just worship the worship the Lord
Devamdeye rajyathile irundhum avan denndaya dayvigathte kathukollada pachathil avan vilundhan Satthan indra avan maachappata
Even though he was born in the kingdom of the Lord he did not even just obey he just had the pride and he fallen down he was called as Satan
Konjakaalangalile manidhanum idee sthanathile vilundhu vudukkara
After some days back even the men are also fall in the same state
Thoodanudaya sisterenbadu nerayu uladu puurnamana
The creation of the angel is a perfect one or the full one
Ha po thoodanukka varachikadha
There is no growth for the angels
Anaal manidhanal maninall uruakki avanay varachikaday vaita
But the Lord God created one after the dust of the earth and give medium to grow
Anaal adhe arathala manidhanum vilundhan
But in the same manner man human being are so fell
Devamdeye sayalaga ruvathin badi sistiikabattam manidha samudhaayam vilundhu vounadu
The human being or the society of the men who was also created in the likeness and the image of God they were fallen
Deva duddan vilundho godhu avanay devan kandugolave illai
When the angel of God fell the God did not even mind at all
Avanukka otanay judgment
Immediately the judgment was given and to give
Adi menme kathukollada andhathoodanay nitthiyasanglinal kettipotutara
The Lord God also just found them with a eternal and there is chain those who did not keep the first
Luciferai aga meyalernikil talivutara
If the Lord God also pulled Lucifer into the great bottomless pit
Anaal avargalukka kai gudukave illai
But the Lord did not give hand to them
Ippidi orukunbaranga
How it would be you see
Ha iravum bagalunkathode sannidhanathile nintra varakai
They were standing in the presence of God night and day
Puurnamai sistiikabattavarkai
They were created after being imperfect
Avangavandu edain kathukolavandi avasimela
They no need to learn anything
Avargalukka music avangamele irundhadu
Even the music was upon them
Ellavidamana kribabishakam ellamay irundhadu
All kind of anointing and grace was found upon them
Namai ipanana abishakathapesaro ama appumay kaapathukkardukka abishakamanna patta krip
Now only we are speaking about the anointing in those ways he was the krip he was anointed to keep
Na oru arathalirukkumbodhu oru pennukku oru avi piddithu alakkali thadu
When he was in a place one girl was a devil possessed it was summoned here
Naan gettan vam peer ennan
I asked what is that name
Ha naandhan thirupadi elumalaya
He says I am thirupadi elumalaya
Ha appanani vasama sikkikittayen sanay
I said you answer correctly here
Na vandibba sikka mattanam poiduva tapiruvan
He says I will escape I will arrange now
Enakkukodi kanakana bhaktarindru kanga naandham periyapana kara saamin
So he said I am the only the great rich God because I have the crores of millions of devotees
Onudey originalakonju solan sanay
Just tell you about tell you about your originality
Bible kalani yaarindukka
Biblically who are you
Potanay adu varutha soluchay
Immediately it says so
Naan keroop kootathay chandava
I belong to the group of Keroop
Adu pisasol naan keroop groupla vulla
And the devil said I am the person from the Keroop
Adunudaya thovakka avakutiriyum
It knew about the starting at the beginning
Ha appidi devanodu irundhu devamdeye magiminal nirappappattu devanay thudithukundrinda Andhathoodan vilundha buludhu devan avanukka kai gudukavillai
Even though they were also created by God they were with God on this they were filled with the glory of God and being a pricing God Even they were fallen Lord did not give hand to them
Anaal denndaya sayalin badiyant dennday ruvathin badiyuruakka patta manidhan Jevaswasa thanal nirappappattam manidhan Devanodu pesikundrinda manidhan avan vilundha buludhu aandavraladu thangikolamudiyavillai Avanukkaai thannday kaya niitina
But the man who was created after the likeness and image of God and breathing in the living breath of him When he was talking and the Lord when he has fallen Lord did not tolerate that he give hand to them
Yavlu devamdeye saila ningal yoosidu baranga
See just think about the activity of God
Puurnamaga sistiikabattathoodan vilundha buludhu kai gudukaada dayvam
The Lord God did not hand to them my angel who was create a perfect
Oru varachikate oru pakku matte oru stharamatte oru kalimaninale uruakka patta manidhan Vilundha buludhu avanukkaavi devan kai gudutha
The Lord God gave hand and he took the nature of the man when he has fallen When he was created after the likeness when he was also created in the dust of dust
Adhalanathan vedam enna solukkara
So then what is the scripture say
Needimangalayala paavigalay rachikave krisse esulagathil vandha
Jesus Christ came and the world not to save the righteous man but the sinners
Idu than devanudaya thittham
This is the plan of God
Andhavilundu vana manidhanukka avarkai gudutha
The man who was fallen he took the nature of that
Thoodanukkaage esu indhapulavathale erangi varaavillai
Jesus Christ did not come to this world for the angel's sake
Thoodanukkaage avarindhulagathale adiputtu marikavillai
He did not be just slaughtered and died for the angel's sake on the set
Thoodanay meetkumudiyage thannday oversortu ratthatiyam avar sindavillai
He did not shit all each and every drop of his blood but to redeem the angel
Vilundhu vana manidhanukka thooki edukumudiyagathan avar ivilavu padugalayum sagittaa
He has also tolerated all endured all this suffering in order to take away and to take away the man who was fallen
Arumayana sagudhene sagudhey neenriki oru vilundhu vana nelavathale kathode sannidhanathile vandirukkala
Believers the believer brother or sister you might have come in the presence of God in a state of falling
Kai gudukkakudiyay oru thuneyachan nelavathale neenandhrukkala
You might have come here without no help and nobody can help you here
Yendavidamana sahayamumillaadhan nelavathale neenindriki kathode sannidhanathile vandirukkala
You might have come in the presence of God without any help for you
Indikey aar unakkukai gudukkara
Today who is going to give you help
Ha yobu oru parisuthavan
Job was a holy man
Ha avan oru needimana
He was a righteous man
Paaranga avanudaya nelavaramkuktharam taaldukundey eponadu
See here his state was going on low and low
Kadumari nan kadumari nan kadaisya vilundhey vutara
He was going on stumbling and stumbling finally he was fallen
Avanukka oru arumayana manevi irundhai
He got a wonderful wife
Kondiya irundhu vilugaravunukka ayo endru vedam solukkara
The scripture mention about being a man alone and fallen is all unto him
Oru thani manidhan oru thani manishii vilundhu vada kodada enbadu kathan vivahamindra valkainmula mai Avanay thookivida devan yatra thuneey erupadithina
The Lord God also appointed the proper help being a man alone he should not be fallen down even if he fall down He need a proper help to give
Anaal indraya ulaganelavaram enna
But what is the present state of the world
Purushane indha maneviyay vila vayithu vudukkara
Even the same wife make the husband to fall
Maneviyay ivanay vila vayithu vudukkara
Even he makes the same wife to fall
Avanudaya manevi chonnal nee devanay thusi thujeevane vidu endru chonnal
His wife says so you just curse God and live your life
Anudanathan kadaisya avan oru harikay seedha
So finally he made a confession
Yobu padineelamadigaram padinramasana thile
Job seventeen three
Avan solukkara aandavare yaar kai gudupaa
Yes he says so Lord who will give hand to me
Paasinga
Please read Vere yaar enakkukai gudukka takkava
Ha vere yaar enakkukai gudukka takkava
Who else can help me or give hand to me
Yaariyatha yaar vandhu enakkukai gudukumudiyam
In my matter who can come and help me Lord
Ungalay kattanla yaar kai gudupadu
In your Lord who can give you help
Undi vyadiyaringalay yaar unakkukai gudupadu
At the time of your sicknesses who will help you
Unudaya tholvinaringalay unakkuprasangamanan aalangarupanga ananunni thookivida aaldrukkara
At the time of your failure there will be person to preach you but is there any person to lift you up
Pressingi naankamadigaram padinramasana thile paranga
Ecclesiastes ten four thirty
Ha vedam enna solukkara
But the scripture say here
Avanay thookivida thuney illaiye
There is no help to lift him up Oru van vilundhaal avan udanali avanay thookivida van kondiya irundhu vilugaravunukka ayo avanay thookivida thuney illaiye
Appa avanukka manevi irundhu ennatuke
So what is the use of being a wife for him
Oru padichapurushana oru engineer kettivijiruke avan irundhu ennatuke
What is the use of being married and engineer your husband
Ha unmayillai avan thookivida thuney illaiye
There is no help to lift him up
Indikey irukkara thuney galan aebidippatta thuney
What kind of help will help me today they have found
Kalyanakattan vairundhu saagaravarekku naangal kalyanakattan thappunne solidaya
So from the very day of a marriage children they are saying what they have married is wrong wrong wrong
Kadaisya vareki idee orayi padu
Finally till the end they are going on singing the same rhyme song
Kalyanakattan vairundhu
From the very same day they married
Kalanda parandricha
The much child goes born
Walandricha
It is grown
Kalyanakatti kudthachi
It has been married
Adukka kalanda parandricha
But there is also a child for that
Anaal innika avan padu vandhu andhavalka sarila valkasaarila valkasaarila
Even today he is also going on singing his life is not correct not good
Na oru arathala oliyansaydhan
He was doing ministry in a place
Ha avangapilligalam periyapillang engineering padichapillang
Their children are very grown up children they are studying engineering
Ha avanku oru vedu ruke
They are having a house
Oru kada ruke
They is having a house shop
Ha daily kaalele avandhre radio aanmanuvichuvar
Every day morning you used to just tune the radio
Andhre radiole konjun suvisheshin soluva
And there will be some gospel will be proclaimed through the radio
Yaarlam besarala karakthandhastheshana karakthapaniuvichuvar
Correctly will be also just on the station
Ivaru ukandhukka par
He used to also sit and listen
Nalla javikiramansinna
Because he was a very prayerful man
Adukkonjunera boduvar nalla sattama boduvar
He will be also just playing loudly sometime
Indha amma paduthrichina
This mother after
Onakkutam bodran ukandhukkelumbadu
Just only for you I am just playing this Ulysses
Ha kadaisla yanta panjayathu vandaga
Finally they
Yantella varavulikaranakati adhe same andhavalkavandu eh neetitha adhathu thirpillaadavavalkadu
The same and the case is like there are prolonging case we cannot even judge it like they used to come for the panjayat
Avan vittama andhama kuprasangamaniyadu par
He used to preach to the mother without leaving
Ha kadaisla yanta vandu
Finally when they approached me
Ha yethanavishajupilligalukke iruthu iruthu vayisaiyche Ivare solara yungappa annikukudukaran soladu needu varigukuduthade illaiyavina
Even the children are at the age of twenty three what the father what the father of her told that on the day he wanted to give she did not even give it
Neen ambleyaruka
Why are you being a man
Neen bichadukara
Why did you birth
Neen bichadukara
Why did you birth
Neen ambleyaruka neen olachi sapunno
If you are a man you should ahah and eat
Teribiyavaru chonna ippidi lam besadiniya pilligalakalai iruthu vayisaiyche indhum kaasukudukla kaasukudukla angra Abidina andhasthiste vandricha
So then the mother the sister also came because why do you don't talk like this they have not given the money
Ipparukkara kada yaar kuduthan kalan
So who has given the shop which we are having present
Ipparukkara vedu yaar kuduthan
Who has given the house which you are living at present
Ha adukkaatavani avaramayidha
Then he was quite upset
Adha annikukudukaran chunnadu kuduthan annarindu vedu vangidupan
So on the day what they wanted to just give me I would have just bought two more houses
Ha ivilam aalangaramavirukkara
Like so many people are there
Ha thookivida neenikuthuney illamae evlovar kastapadanga
Many people are also suffering because they don't get any help to lift them
Yobu solukkara yaanay thookivida enakkukai gudukka yaarukkara
Here job says who is there to help me and lift me up
Nampechadutapattupilligalansathu poyitanga
All the ten children I have given birth they have all died
Enakkarana aadum aadu ottavang kaldha ellamay poyiritchi
All the sheep's and combers as well as the cattle everything I have lost
Oru periyabangla kettivichunna padupilligalansathu oru function attanmanlanan andhveda pidiyadu idinju vilundricha
I built a great bank low then even all the ten children they were so attended a function The house broken down and fell on it was
Na ennekiksaavani yamoyukku pathukittaya irukkara
Today my wife is also just washing when I will dry
Ippanacholara enakkukai yaar kai gudupaa
Now only he says who will give me
Arumayanaule ungalay yaaravudhi ippidi thasi diriyamal thikkutiriyamal indhanelavathal ningal irundhal Oru alu ungalukka irukkara avarkai gudukkara dayvam esu
Believers child of God we are also in the same state without knowing the direction of the way Who is going to help you there is a one person he is going to give you help that is Jesus Christ
Ha yobu padineelamoolavam solukkara Ennudaya kariyathay aandavare ummeela votukollum Enakkukaan neer vandhu jaaminaa nilum endru kakkara
Here he says in Job seventeen three Lord take my matter upon me we ask a surety for me Lord
Avan solara enakkukaan neer pinaypaddum jaaminaa nilva aandavare Enkariyatho ummeela votukollum aandavare vere yaaraya enakkukai gudukamudiyam
Who else can give me help Lord take my matter upon me and make me a surety for surety for me
Yobuukka devan kai guduthara illia
But the Lord God gave the hand to again to Job
Kudutharindu solungaga karangalivetha
Those who say yes raise your hand
Avarka sadarnama kai gudukla rettipana asirvadu thodu seetha avanukka kai gudutha
Not ordinarily he has given his hand with a double portion of the blessing the Lord gave his hand
Namakkukai gudukkara aandavarakai esu krisse nirayvin devanaga namadeyamathile vandirukkara
Our Lord God Jesus Christ is a God of fullness he has come here to help us
Avar yaarukka kai gudukkara
And whom he is giving the hand
Indha kelvikke enna bagil kadaikarade
What kind of hands are we going to get
Arumayana devamdeye pilliyay unakkidindriki devan kai gudukkavendumaanal
Believers child of God today if the Lord God want to take you
Un pilligalukka devan kai gudukkavendumaanal
If the Lord God want to help the hand to the children of you
Unudaya tholilil devamdeye kai gudukkavendumaanal
If the Lord God has to help you in your business
Unudaya valkayi kovrisa devan kai gudukkavendumaanal
If the Lord God has to help once for your life
Avar duddurukka kai gudukamal aabrahamin sandadiki kai gudutha
He has not given took the nature of the angel he took the nature of the seed of Abraham
Aabrahamin sandadina adukku muni adayalangalirukkara
There is the generation of the seed of Abraham there are three
Indikey ukandhrukkara ningal allaram aabrahamin sandadigala enbadu ningalay checkpuni patharala
You can you yes examine and check those are seated here are you the seed of Abraham
Adukku poi DNA pannavandi avasimela
You don't need to go and do that DNA check
Ni viswasi aanal ni aabrahamin pillai
If you are a believer you are a child of Abraham
Kalathiar padinramadigaram elavasana thindbadi
According to Galatians three seven
Viswasa markathari avarum aabrahamin pilligalindra alakappaduthara
All of those who are those who are believing they are called the generation of Abraham
Ni devan undindru mudalavu viswasi
First of all you have to believe that is God
Andhdevan esu krisse endru viswasi
You have to believe that God is Lord Jesus Christ
Andhyesu chivikarara enbadu ni viswasi
You have to believe that the Lord Jesus Christ is living
Avare thedukkara avar balan halikkara varindru puurna nichiyathodu ni viswasi
He was also just believing with a perfect assurance he is also giving the reward unto those who seek him
Ha ningal appidi oru viswasa maathukkathara vandhal unakk devan indha kaale velile kai gudupaa
If you all like the people love the believing people the Lord God will give you hand
Kirandavudhi indha aabrahamin kumarane engay kandupidi badu
Secondly we have can we find out the son of Abraham
Sagayyum manandriminabuludhu avan aabrahamin kumarane indra alakappata
When Sagay was got the ribbon and he was called as the son of Abraham
Itthana varanandhdeva samudhukvarukkara
So many weeks I am attending the presence of God
Itthane madangalindhacharchikana varukkara
So many months I am attending this church
Itthane varudam naan engay varukkara
So many years I am coming here
Kai gudupaa undu solukkara argale kai gudukavillai enanandhakaya thedukkara endru ni solaa
You may be saying they will be saying the Lord God will give the hand but he is not even then you may be going on seeking the help
Sagay un vidhuk esu thangumudiyaga vandhupadu avan manandrimina
When the Lord Jesus Christ gave the house and Sagay should dwell he repented
Manam thirumbudal unay aabrahamin sandadiyai maachukkara
The repentance make you ask the son of the seed of Abraham
Indriki indhvidhuk rachipu vandhathu
Today this house it got the salvation
Evenum aabrahamin kumarana irukkara
He is also the son of Abraham
Indriki neenindhukkutathala manandrimbi unvalvin tholvigalukkaaga manaskaba pattu Aandavudi ratthatinal unekalvi unay valkayi seerpututha neenviruminal unakkavari indriki kai gudupaa
Today we also repent as well as if you worry about all the sorrows of you And as well as the failures of you if you also being blessed washed by the blood of Jesus Christ today he will give you hand
Lookalunusuvisheshutla oru belevinamana oru avi wallameyal thakka patta oru pennirundhal
In Luke the Gospel there is a woman she was attacked by the spirit of infirmity
Ha avala andhavallame kooniyai maachirundha
That spirit made him ask a bad woman
Ippidi orukunbaranga
How it would be you see
Ha kattara avala vidhulayakina
The Lord God delivered her
Yeavala vidhulayakina
Why the Lord God delivered her
Adukka avar chunnakarnam enna What was the reason he said so? She is also the daughter of Abraham. He gave a great beautiful explanation. It was a very good explanation. I was just astonished. I did not just hear, but in that view. I heard in the view. I did not even preach that one. Even though she was a bad woman, she used to attend the presence of God, so the Lord. Even the people who are having the very good lesson, they are not attending. They are having the very good lesson, there is she not attending the church. The Lord has given two wheelers. The Lord has given four wheelers. The Lord has made him as a king like. He is also just thinking to come to the presence of God, well, can I go or not?
She was a very good woman. Ah, Tabitha.
Tabitha.
Elavdal thorkai.
Ah, thorka.
Ah, Tabitha le chonna maan enra artha.
Ah, Tabitha means a deer.
Ah, avikriya jivitle naam or maangalai pola erukkana.
In the spiritual love you all should be like deer.
Ah, ethanavirudhe abhitypatta oru valkeerukkara.
How many of you are loving such kind of life in you?
Maan aanadhe neerodegale vanchithu kadurudhu boole. Adhe devunidhi, adhe devunee vanchithu kadurugira oru jiviyam mirukkara.
There is also love as a heart, a path after the water brook, we go to only one path after the law.
Avil oru shishi.
She was a, they are woman disabled.
Ah, adutha aval dharmum seethu vandhaal.
She was doing arms.
Anegarudhi amanaththi marikkumudiyaka vastaratthi aval thayareethu vandhaal.
She was also preparing many governments to guard on the shame of other people.
Ippitypatta oru pennai valadukai kuduthu avan thukivutthaan.
Such kind of woman was given by the right kind of Peter and she was, she was raised.
Aval parisuthavangal kutthatill irundhaal.
She was in the midst of the saints.
Ah, apritam bhaiil chulukkara.
The Bible says so.
Parisuthavangal kutthatill irundhaal, kattar onakkay ooliyargal mulamai kayukudupaa.
If you are being found in the group of the saints, through the servants of God, the Lord shall give hand.
Ooliyargalde kayukuduttal enrindusannaal, adhe jabathle avarle thukivuduvade.
Giving hand through the servants of God means the prayer they will lift them up.
Podagathle thukivuduvade.
Through the must say they will lift them up.
Iravunnera jabangalile avarle thanguvade.
In the night prayer they will be upholding them.
Vera ooliyakaran varanne cheyamudiyam.
What else the servants of God can they do?
Ooliyakaran oru manushanukkayukukkara, naa jabathle than kayukukkamudiyam.
The servants of God, they are giving hand and only in the prayer they can help them.
Avan maamishigamaka sailathu ponaavan.
Because with the flesh lead they are actionless.
Ah, avan vandhu andavathle odhuviseyave mudiyaa.
They cannot help in that level.
Ah, avanukkavandhu level illa, avanuka andavishiyathle odhuviseyamudiyaa.
In that matter they cannot help.
Ah, oru ooliyakaran vandhu jabathle maatrana avan thukivudakkooda.
Only the servant of God, the prayer, they can help them and lift them up.
Priyamanalai indhake ethanavirde devan kayukukkavendu vandhu vanchithu vandhirukkari.
Will the government have come here with a decision, the Lord has to give help and you.
Inno oru chance devan onakkayukutthal, naan elumbivuduvanenrindu ethanaviru kathirukkari.
How many of you are waiting here? The Lord has given one chance, I'll just, I'll, I'll raise up.
Ah, innu chilla vasanangal naan ungalukkunbaaka vikiraya.
I want to place before at more words.
Oru silar, silarukkayukutupade illa.
Some people, they will not help and other people.
Ah, oru viswasi yarukallan kayukukkavendam.
A believer and whom and all you have to give help.
Meeluttamaga naan chunnan, anadigalukkayukutupade.
Hopefully I say so, you have to give help and often.
Ooliyathukkayukutupade.
And the ministry you have to help.
Viswasiyilukkayukutupade.
And the believers you have to help.
Jabathle kayukutupade.
In the prayer she will help others.
Oru vela nengal sarirapragarama godhuviseyakku daadavula irundhal, nengal avarle jabathle thangan.
Perhaps if we also, you are not ready to help others physically, in the prayer you have to uphold them.
Idu pogachilla karingale ungalukkunbaaka vikiraya.
Beyond this, I want to place before something in front of you.
Nengi epidilallan kayukudthingalan paranga.
You just take it over whether you got help.
Nee kayukudukkamalay kattar onakkayukudukunna, naa adhu kadakivee kadaka.
Unless if you give help, if you also expect from the, except expect the help from the Lord, you will not get it.
Naan thirumujalra, yada ni vedikiriyavada than arukumudiyam.
What else? I want to repeat there, whatever you got, so you can repeat, repeat.
Dharmum, thalekaakun thamilla solva.
In Tamil they say, the arms will keep your head.
Ni modala dharmum seeno, adhu samayathle vandhu onakkennesiya.
So, the, the.
Modalaavade.
First of all.
Saul, powlaagamara kayukudungaai.
You have to give help and solve as you change into Paul.
Na iduvariki naalu karinyan chunnan.
For, I have told you four things so far.
Ah, undra anadigalukkayukutupade.
One thing, a help and the others.
Ooliyathukkayukutupade.
And the ministry you have to help.
Ah, viswasiyilukkayukutupade.
Helping the believers.
Jabathle kayukutupade.
In the prayer you have to help.
Ah, idu oru portion.
This is one portion.
Ah, adutha ipa praktikal life la ungalakondu vara.
Secondly, I want to bring you in a practical life.
Saulai kattar sanditha.
The Lord God met Saul.
Sanditha odhanai avan kurdaa pooda.
After he goes where? He goes, we know blind man.
Ah, avanuka andhastapla irundhu, kalaka mekka, engittu poonu unnamithirulla.
Did not know from that step to go to east or west or anywhere.
Naan esu enrindu avanoodu pesivuttha.
The Lord God taught I am Jesus Christ.
Ni patranathukullu poonchulittha.
In the Lord said, you go into the city.
Patrana engaruge.
Where is the city?
Ivannan kannukurdaedhaana.
Because he become a blind man.
Ivana andhapatranathukullakundu bogae, oru silar kayilagukuduthaaraka.
Some people have helped and him to take him into the city.
Appidi kayilagukuduthu kundu poonu edathle than, angia ananiya vandhararla sanditha.
In the place, they were also girl free and took him in the city and earlier came and met him.
Oru paavi manandhrumbadni kayukuda.
You have to give help and the sinners who repent.
Ah, ethanavaavi, ethanaviru rachikappadukkani nengayukayukudipenga.
And how many people you have given hand to be saved?
Opposal 9thamadikaram 8thavasanathle.
In Acts 9:8.
Avanukkayilagukuduthu avane patranathukullakundu vittthaark.
They gave us a given him help with a hand and took him to the city.
Andhathle 3 naal kadanda.
In that place he was three days.
Avanga kodavandhongala oodi poyer.
All the people those who came with them, they ran away.
Ah, avane thirtuthuvathirukku, elavdal devan avanoodukke edayputuvathirukku, avarukkayilagukuduthu avane kundu vittthaark.
They gave us a given help and give the Lord God should change him to, to be corrected.
Ethanai paavigel manandhrumbadurukku nengal kayukudipirigai.
And how many sinners he have given help and they have to be repented?
Unga manasachi madhichulaga.
According to your conscience you say.
Ethanavirudhe rachipukku nengakarnama amanjiripenga.
You, and how many people salvation you are the reason?
Yosshu paranga.
Just think it over.
Nengal, ungalde rachip, nengi pooyi, ethanapau, saulapau la maatiirukin.
You have gone on may how many souls into Paul.
Avanga paranga, andhakoodavandhapoorchevavirulallaro, alaga avanukkayukuduthu kundu vittuponaanga, angia avan devan avane sanditha.
Here you see all the soldiers they came with you beautifully, they have given him hand and took him, the Lord God met him there.
Indhasaavila ethanaviru neekayukuduthukundu chathirupaa.
Into this congregation, how many people you have given hand and brought him here?
Illa, yavano kayukuduthukundu vadaala, ethanaviru kayipudichthorathivutte.
How many people also after chase the people those have brought him, after they have given their hands and brought here?
Yosshu paranga.
Yes, you think it over.
Unga manasachi ungalukthirime.
Only you know, you are conscious.
Saul, powlayimara, avanga kayukuduthukundu vitttha.
They gave us a given hands to solve, to change into Paul.
Irandaavade.
Secondly.
Nyayadipadigal padinaraamadikaram.
Judges chapter 60.
26. Ah, angia Simpsonukkay oru payyan kayukuttha.
Here young lad was giving hand and the Samson.
Ella, vallamii elandu vooipinmatrathin vichu kattathle, viraktile, sahunungra nelavartle irunda, oru onakkay, oru pillayandhan kayukuttha.
A lad was giving hand and the man who was lost all his strength at the condition he was frustrated wanted to die.
Andhaman, andhappilayandhan kayukutupudu tha, even andhathoonukittapoyin, nikka mudindha.
When the lad give him hand, he could able to stand near the pillar.
Undru, saul powlayimara kayukutupade.
One thing giving hand and to solve us to change into Paul.
Paavi manandhrumbadni kayukutupade.
You have to help another sinner to change into a right man.
Irandaavade.
Secondly.
Ah, Simpson jayke avan kayukuttha.
He has given hand and to Samson has to got the victory.
Pinmartramenbade, adikkadi janangalukkule varugira oru thakdal.
The, the back sliding is an attack often people they get.
Inniki nalala jebichituppa, naalikvata avanacharchile kadaaya.
Today they will be praying very well, tomorrow if you see they are not in the church at all.
Ah, prakashita aneganachathrungal indhriki sabaila illa.
Today the, the sun goes shining, today they are not found in the church.
Paranga, indhassimpsona, thidinupatha jaila kadakara.
Suddenly if you see Samson, he was put in the prison.
Ipavam chulra, andavare naan vendu, vottha jaeyama mudike aasapaduraya.
Today he is, now he says, oh Lord, I want to finish my course victoriously.
Ipavamunkkayukutupade yadre.
Who was given hand and them now?
Oru pillayandhan kayukuduthu avanakundu vitttha.
Yeah lad was giving hand and took him there.
Pinmartralerukkaraavana, appidi pinmartram pinmartramdali odikira kudaade, avanayum jaykavikke neekayukukkavendam.
You should not just a good ask the man who was in the back slide, you have also just help him to come upward from the back sliding condition of him.
Avam belavinanavantothu peta, avam pinmaritha, avan chari illa, ipudiye, neetalli, talli, talli, avanakundu velli, palathal talirekuda.
You should not go and take him into the pit and push him there because he has back slided, he is not correct.
Andhassimpsonay jaykavikke, andhappilayandhan kayukuttha.
This lad was giving hand and Samson to got the victory.
Opposal 3rdamadikaram 7thavasanathay parukumilade.
As of chapter 37 when you read.
Pedur oru onakkay valadukai kudutha.
Peter gave the right hand of him to a man.
Avan oru sappani.
He was a lame man.
40 varishamindhdevaalaithu vasalla ukandhurukkara oru al.
He was a man, he sat on the, on the door of the, door of the temple of God for forty long years.
Ivam pinmari veli pohala.
He did not go out after God back sliding.
Sabakalirukkaran.
He was inside the congregation.
Satyathinmadhi nadakkaavan.
He was a man, he did not walk according to the truth.
Ella, churchley epidippatta oru groupurukon.
There is also a group in all the church likewise.
Ah, kootan jalsi irukona, satyathinmadhi nadakara kootan ellave.
The group will be more, the crowd will move according to the truth, how many people are walking.
Avayirunda vasal, alangara vasal.
He was in the, late in the beautiful gate.
Ah, andhakateukpeyavandhu beautiful gate.
The gate was called as a beautiful gate.
Anna, ala ukandhurukkaalukka nadakamudiyaa.
But the man who was sitting in the beautiful gate, he cannot walk.
Ebedu irukunparanga.
How it would be a sea?
Vellachamin peyuvachirupaanga.
It will be named as the late Charming.
Aal, aal pathina ungalukthiriyapidi irupan.
You see how you will be.
Ah, naan vendu, yaray tapath, apriyara irundhu poraparanga, naan edukisolra, naa peyumari irukon, ivam vandhu, alangara vasalla ukandhrinda.
He was a man, he was sat in the beautiful gate.
Anna, aalukkenesimudiyade, nadakamudiyaa.
But he was unable to walk.
Indhassatyathinmadhi nadaklanana, neeparlavudukpoomudiyadu onakkadavath tharakamatare.
If you not walk, walk according to the truth, the gate, you will not go, the gate will not be open to you.
Marishakana kaga, sappaniyagirunda manidhanukke, andhapeedu valadukai kuduthathinal, andrikavane elundu devanndi aalithukullay ponaan.
For he is the man, he was a lame on the day, Peter gave his hand, he went into the temple of God under it.
Satyathinmadhi nadaklanchulittha, avanapurakuncharakudaade, avanenggerage panan.
So you should encourage him because he is not work, work according to the truth, you have to encourage him, you should not discourage him.
Bhaiil, bhaiil padinya.
Read Bible.
Joomanuga.
Please pray.
Vosamboonga.
Take fasting.
Kattar odhuvisevar.
The Lord God shall help you.
Devan onakkayukutupara.
Lord God will help you.
Onakkuparlavavaraavukkai.
There is also a chance for you to go.
Avanenggerage panniyavane, andhavaladukai kuduthu thukivuttha, avan enditchi nadakaramsta.
He is sort of walking after he has also given his right hand and grace him.
Naam yarukallan kayukuklyo, adhalallan devan kayukudukkari.
And who are the people who have not given and the Lord has given his hand and him.
Mark 9thamadikaram 27thavasanathay parukumilade.
Mark 9:27 when you read.
Pisasubiditha andhavi naal alakali pottukilavilandhamanidhanai, esu kayukuduthu thukivuttha.
The man who was also devil possessed dominated by the devil, Jesus Christ gave his hand and lifted him up.
Ah, neng yarukallan kayukukmattingalo, adhalallan esu kayukukkara.
And who the people who are not giving hand, Jesus Christ will give his hand to them.
Powlukkayukukka aal illai.
There is no person to give hand and to Paul.
Simpsonukkayukukke, israeler illai.
There is no Israel to give hand and to Samson.
Andhassappaniukkayukukke, oravunargal illai.
There is no relation to give hand and to the lame man.
Indhapisasubiditha unkukkayukukka yaaru illai.
No one was ready to give hand and to the devil possessed man.
Anna, andhapisasubiditha manidhanukke esu kayukuttha.
But and who the devil possessed man, Jesus Christ gave his hand.
Mark 1:31.
When we read Mark 1:31.
Ah, jorathinala pathikappattu, andhapeedruvin maamikey esu kayukuttha.
Jesus Christ also gave the hand and to the woman, the, the woman, the mother in law.
Idi ede kanbikara.
What does this show this?
Gavaniya, idi ede kanbikara.
What does this show this?
Vyadi potta kayukukumadaanga.
So when they are deceased, they will not give hand.
Missionla kodha, oru conceptumari vandrichi.
Even in the machine like a concept it is.
Nalla irukkara, orukey odidiyara, nalla illana, oru tha, apidiyavandi orangatti taliyukkada.
Till they are good, they will be going on running, if they are not good, you have to just push the button.
Nalla top postlarundhu tha tapita, oru nalla top postlarundhu tha tapirva.
If they are in the top post, they can escape.
Illana, kudumbatalakuda, apiyee orangatti va.
Even in the family, they will be just put astray.
Ah, vyadi pottanerathle kayukukkara devunidhi vela.
It is the work of the law at the time of your sickness, he will give you hand.
Madalamsavvil 3rdamadikarama.
In first Samuel chapter 30.
Ah, 33. Angia oru manidhan vyadi pottanendusolliavandh ejamman, avane kayivutthu de pita.
Here after being a man, he was sick, the master of him left him and went.
Ebedu irukumparanga.
How it would be?
Yuttakalathukkavandavan.
The man, he came to the battlefield.
Ah, devan, kolladikumudiyaka vandavan.
He came to got the spoil.
Ejamman kudheyevandavan.
He came with the master of him.
Ipavam vyadi pottita.
Now he became sick.
Paranga, oru yuvyarakka illama, avan engavutache, angia valiriya kaatle vittupida.
Without any mercy or pity on the forest, he still give us left.
Yavlu nirpudhaman nelavara.
What a pathetic situation.
Naan kalela padichanku, vyadi potta avanakayivutthanar.
Early morning I did that, yeah after he became sick, they give us left out.
Ah, indhapeedruundiyam maamiar, maamiar ayar madipa.
So who wants the mother in law Peter?
Ah, maamiar, naan nalakalathle madhikumadaanga.
Even nobody will respect the mother in law.
Ena ivan vandhu, adukumunna baingarashata ponnavaanga.
Because they will be doing a lot of mischief before that.
Ah, anala, kadaisikaalam varunni ungalukkummarandu peridhe.
They will just forget that, they are also going to get the lost days.
Andhamaamiarukkara oru berye boardun tharangala.
They are thinking, great name or sign board of the mother in law.
Adhuvachitto oru aataaadi modipanga, oru pathuvarsthalavandi downaido, adukparu, marma kayaladha, vali illamuchikunno, adhin damma marukthirivee thirila.
This mother, they do not know, only they have to understand the hand of the daughter in law with the, with the board of the mother in law, they will be just working very greatly for standing here.
Esu, esu andhavitu vandhirukkara.
When Jesus, Jesus Christ visited their house.
Ah, indhapaata pedruvindhi maami enrindjaache, andhiflatleruke.
When you see here, the mother in law Peter was on the, on the down.
Pa, esu pathaar.
Jesus saw that.
Indhammaukipabpedru kayukukamataar.
Now Peter will not give hand and to this mother in law.
Illa pedruvindhi mahalukkayukukamata.
Or the daughter of Peter also will not give hand.
Naanumboidanna, ivakadaisuri chetha pidduva.
If I go also, she will die.
Anala esu pooyi, andhpedruvindhi maamikkenesinjare, kayukudukkata.
So then Jesus went and give the hand to the mother in law Peter.
Ah, yaravadi, mamiyara, yaravadi belavinaputtirunna, nengana, kattar nekunkukayukukkara.
Is there any mother in law, those who we can, today the Lord God is giving his hand to you.
Ah, neng andhpostingsa sariyabainburuthu nengana, kadaisikalathal ungalukkayukupaa.
If you also use the posting in a right manner, the final of your days, the Lord God shall give his hand to you.
Ah, neng vendu, neng vendu, isthatukkaadiyengana, kadaisalisthatukkaadiyavundirukon.
If you also work as you like means finally you have to work accordingly.
Yosshu paranga.
Yes, you think it over.
Esu andh, jorathinala pathikappattu, kayividappattu andhappennukkayukuttha.
Jesus Christ gave hand and to the woman, she was also suffering with sickness of fever.
Mathayipadinankaamadikaram 30 oravasanathay parukumilade.
Matthew 14:31 when we read.
Amildhukundrindhpedruvukke esu kayukuttha.
Now Jesus Christ also gave the hand and to the Peter who was sinking.
Kadalaalai balama irukkaraekandu avan bayandhaan.
He was also gone, because the waves of the sea was very fast.
Esuve, amildhenindhu kathina.
He shouted, Jesus Christ, I am drowning.
Ah, indhulakatlani amildhukundrakkaraaya.
Are you just drowning in this wall?
Paavu ulakatlani amildhukundrakkaraaya.
Are you drowning in the sinful world?
Pulada, palakka, vallakkangalani amildhukundrakkaraaya.
Are you singing in the evil characters of you?
Ipayesu, esu illa, preyaruthukumudiyunchulaga.
If there is no Jesus who will lift him up.
Huh? Vera yaravandhu thukua?
Who else will come and lift him up?
Yavvan vandruvara.
Whether John will come?
Illa, adhipotla, tambi, kodaparandhambirukkana, andraya, patrana, annanene, undhu undruvaraana.
The same board and who the own brother is, whether we will call you my brother and come?
Anna vandruvara.
Whether the own brother yellow bear will come?
Avan angarundusolva, tambi, andharyayasolva, tannilayarangi, yaivana nadanda.
So being there, Andrew will say, why you just go down to the water and walked?
Saavutna, saavutum.
Let him die.
Ah, yavvan vandruvara.
Whether John will come?
Kabadattu ottham israelan kudichiravana.
Whether the uncoiled other Israel will be jumped down?
Or thunukudikumada.
And will jump.
Ah, amildhukundrakkaraavana thukivudukunna, orayavura karam, adhe esu vin karamda.
Only one hand and the arm of Jesus Christ will also lift the, lift up the person who is drowning.
Ullakamunne amiltukudiyavuru sakthi.
The wall is a power to drown you.
Adukprakshaneenrakkanigal ochirukke.
There is also the brother, brother problem with that.
Palavidumona porakattangal kundundu, neepriyavadukkila amukkunna.
He will also bring various kinds of conflict and make you to sink down.
Andhakadal alaimel nadakaraavaraan onakkayukukamudiyaa.
Only then the person who walks upon the waves of the sea, he can give you a hand.
Mathi 9thamadikaram 25thavasanathle.
Matthew 9:25.
Oru jabaviranudhi mahal chethupuyuttha.
Here as a prayer warriors, our daughter was died.
Undhede jabavalkay chethupuyurukon.
Your life of prayer might have, have been died.
Onnal kadanda halangalai pola nightle jebikamudiyarada.
Are you able to pray in the night time like the past days?
Adhikala jabavunnalapanna mudiyarada.
Are you able to make the morning prayer?
Mundhey naatkali pola kadaithanerangal jabathle kalikiraya.
Are you also spending the time like the former days you are spending in the prayer?
Mundhey halangalai pola jabathle mulangal podamudiyarada.
Are you able to kneel down in the prayer like the former days?
Kalaramal unkayukale onnal verikamudiyarada.
Are you also just such a guy without a variety?
Badil kadekkuvarai jabathle porada mudiyarada.
Are you able to just try in the prayer till you get the answer?
Ah, inni paranga, andhjabaviranudhi mahal yarandu vitttha.
Today you see the, the man of the prayer warriors, daughter was died.
Arumana devanndipilaya, ungalde jabavalkay chethupuyivutthaade.
Will I say, oh God, your life of prayer has been died.
Panirundu varudamaha irundharana, ungalde jabavalkay indhreki chethupoonan nelavartle neevandrukkara.
Today you have come here as if the level you have been died, for the past twelve years, you are the life of prayer.
Andhappennukkavayidu panirundhe.
That was, that was the girl, the age of twelve.
Anna, lippulidhi yaranduvittha.
Now she has been died.
Kadanda ettu varisma, nee jabavirana irundai, ippulidhu unjabavalkay chethupuyivuttha.
The past eight years you have been a prayer warrior, now the life of prayer has been died for you.
Ah, ungalde jabavalkay chethupoyin, neenge pugurai.
Where are you going after your life of prayer has been died?
Inniki deva sattam illai.
Today there is no voice of God to you.
Velipadutthal illai.
There is no revelation to you.
Yavudhal illai.
There is no urging to you.
Jabathukke endhavakuthatham badil illai.
You don't get any response on your prayer for you.
Ah, yavlu nirpandhaman nelavara.
What a pathetic situation of you.
Kaali idoro oru kalathalavunne elupinarai, ippe elupukkara.
Every morning the Lord God wake you up once upon a time, whether he is waking you today.
Andhjabavalkay sikkaai, ippos chethupoyitschi.
The life of prayer has been, after it has been sick, it is died now.
Ah, inniki onakkur pathramishin jebikamudiyala.
Today you are not able to pray for ten minutes at least.
Andhamarithupona, jabaviranudhi mahalai, esu kayukuduthu thukivutte, mahalay elundurindhu, avanithukivuttha.
Is a dead daughter of the prayer warrior, the Lord God, Jesus Christ gave his hand and said, daughter, you rise up.
Saul powlaamara kayukudungaai.
You give hand and to solve us to change into Paul.
Paavigel manandhrumbakayukudungaai.
You have to give hand and the sinners who we.
Pinmatakaragal jaykakayukudungaai.
You have to just give hand and the people those who are to be victorious.
Ah, backsliders, pinmatakaragal jaykakayukudungaai.
You have to give hand and the backsliders, we get the victory.
Satyathinmadhi nadakamudiyavaruval nadakka kayukudungaai.
The people those who are not walk according to the truth, you have to give hand and them to walk according to the truth.
Pisasubidile thakappattavukkayukudungaai.
You have to give other people, those are being affected by the devil.
Vyadi pottavukkayukukka kayukudungaai.
You have to give hand and the people, those who are being sick.
Ullakatlamildhukundrakkavukkayukukka kayukudungaai.
Those who are being drowned in the wall, you have to give hand and them.
Jabavalkayla marithupoonavukkayukukka kayukudungaai.
You have to give hand and the people, those who are being died in the prayer life of them.
Neekayukutthal, kattar onakkayukupaa.
If you give hand and them, the Lord shall give his hand to you.
Devan onakkayukukunna, chulra ungalakankalay moodunga.
Those who like that, the Lord has to give hand and you close your eyes.
Naan oru anjinamudan tharuvan.
I will give you five minutes.
Oru vela, nee iduvarai matthorukkayukukkamalirundhal, indhreki neekayukuda.
Because you have not given hand and to any people so far, give hand and to the people today.
Yanakke mudiyamargana, yarukkunna pooyi kayukupaa, yanakko oru naalangi varu chandukayukuttha, naan veliyavandruvanchala.
I even can't just help myself, if some four or five people give me help, help me, I will come out.
Ah, yanakko oral kayukutthapodada, yanakke yalatthu prakshaneelthukke, ellarun chandukayukuttha, mulu sabayin kayukuttha, naan veliyavaruvanchala.
I have seven or eight problems, I will know one, not as enough, but the whole congregation they have to join together and give help and we.
Oru payyan ganathle voodundhuta.
One boy has fallen in the well.
Ah, avan veliyavandhu, ivanasaathakke, ellarunkaapathruthukkayukurulla vitttha.
All the people from outside hearing the voice of him, they want to just escape from that, save him, they put the rope in him.
Tambi, andhakayurakattikavana, avanithukirvana.
They say so, boy, just, boy, just tie this rope, we want to just lift you up.
Avan chulana, naan katradhalal jera, engaapavukutvaana.
They say so, it is right, I will tie that, bring my father.
Ah, avan chulana, epa, neekatra, naan avanithukiravan, chinnapayidana, apaavandha, oratharavandha, naan thukiravan chana.
They say so, you are a small boy, no need to give a father, we tie the rope around you, that will lift you.
Engaapavukutva, kutvandha, naan kairakattuva, abrinam.
Only then if you bring my father, I will tie my, tie the rope, he said so.
Chari, avanapa berye, berye, oru berye aal arpambolrunkchulte, vittla puythedi, epa, unpayyan ganathle vandhuttha, oni vaan, chuli, kattaranta, chali, avarakutva.
So I go, went and saw there, because the father, maybe a very mighty man, a brave man, so because the sun has fallen down in the well, you come.
Indhavandhu patha, apa nonja.
So when you come here, give us a skeleton like.
Andhala live, neeneshimudiyade, thukumudiyaa.
He cannot even lift you up at all.
Ah, avan chulana, engaapavandhitaraan.
He asked whether my father has come.
Avane meelarundhu payyan apa sonara, naan venditthanda, abrinchala.
From up the father said, yes, I go come here.
Odhanai kayurilang kettidanga, thukidanga.
Immediately he just tied the rope, he lifted, he was lifted up.
Veliyavandhavunne kettanga.
It came out, they said.
Kathadi marukka, ungaapa, ivaru vandha than thukunnu, naalala unithukamatama, abrinchala.
They asked, your father is like the skeleton, he cannot even, only then if he comes.
Engaapa kathadi marirukkaaro, yelmukudumarirukkaro, nengellaruvutta, engaapa viddavemataarnana.
So whether my father is like the skeleton, we all leave, my father will not leave at all.
Engaapukshaktiirkai illio, ana engaapa, nengellaru vittakuda, avar yelmukudumarindha, neethukamavudam, veerayukuduthuvar.
Whether my father is having ability or strength or not, if you all leave, my father will not leave at all, he said so.
Undhavupan univutthuvara.
Whether your father leave you.
Ibrahimee, naan unni epidi kayivuduvan.
Ibrahim, I shall forsake you.
Amen, kayivudukkara devan alla, avar kayukukkara devan.
He is not a God to forsake you, he is want to give his hand and you.
Amen, devan onakkayukukkaraavara, viswasaamullaavargal, kankalaymodi mulangalpadiyittu devanidhuthiingal, kattavu, iduvarai onakkayukutthire, innimalu neekayukukkavalavu.
Oh, so have it, go, the Lord God is able to help me, you have also given me help so far, we have to, we have to give me help.
Hallelujah, amen, ethanavirindhkaalai velile, andavaraagay esuve, kayukukkam devanai parukkariirigai. Neen dhanelavartle irundhalum, avar unakkayukukkavalavu. Hallelujah, devan unakkayukukkavalavu. Hallelujah, amen, ellarunkankalay modi, adarshinamana karathen noke parangalaen. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amildhukundrindhre remiyavukku oru kayiru vandade, hallelujah, amildhukundrakkara pedruvukke, esu neradiyai karathen ettinar. Hallelujah, kayividappattu jorathle pathikappattu, andhpedruvin maamikey esu karathen ettinar. Pisasubidithavan, seyvenenal pathikappattavan, kudumbam siralindhavonadendre, odhikavikke pathalana, andhapisasubidithavunkke, esu kay nettinar. Hallelujah, ethanavir viswasiikiririgai, hallelujah, avikriya jivitle thothu, viswasetle thothu, parisuthathle kolechalaagi, jabachivya mattupoi, irundu boona vandhu, innimalu valkay illa, ingra, neetchiyathukvandha onakkay, esu kayukukkara. Hallelujah, hallelujah, viswasi thal, indhreki avarude karathai, darshinathalambarkalam, adarshinathalambini parkalam. Thirabakka thikkarabala, thikkarabala, thidi, bidi, bikkarabala, kathidi. Hallelujah, 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 oh, thirabakka thidakka, thirabakka thidabala. Ah, thoodarulukkayukukavilla. Anna, kattar, abraghamin sandhadikayukuttha. Neen kankalay modiyosiddupaa, om kudumbatal kattar, ethriyavarkakayukukkamal, onakkamathran kayukuttha. Amen, ethanaviradha viswasiikiririgai. Om kodaparandhavunukkukuda kayukukli. Avangayani galai irukala, annal nee opyadai, avanga tharamasaligal, onakkondrumay thiriyadu. Anna, kattar onay thirindukundhar, onakkayukuttha. Amen, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, thirabakka thidikada, thidikada, banamthi da, ni vanathi. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thididibababada, damada, ikkada, babada, kadaba, kadaba, kadidibabakada, babakada. Unmayai, en kudumbam enakkayukukavilla. En manivipakathalyo, en purshendhey pakathalyo, en pillagaludhey pakathalyo, en petthorul sayalyo, sabai pakathalyo, oravunargal pakathalyo, nanbarul pakathalyo, yandha pakathalumirundhu, enakkayukukkatakkavul illai. Devan oruvar kayukutthal, maatrame, naan elumbineerkamudiyam. Andhanelavartle yaravudirundhal kayukale vayaththangal, ungalukkaha, naangal jebikapogurav. Nengal sorndu bahadaringai, vidaitu bahadaringai, aderiyapattu bahadaringai, pinvangi bahadaringai. Amen, devan ungalukkayukupaa. Neerayaa, kayukukkamudiyadu sunnelayale, devan onakkayukupaa. Neen kadanda halangalil, anegay eligalukkayukudukkari, anadigalukkani kayukudukkari, ooliyathukkani kayukudukkari, anegaddevunidhi pillagalukkani kayukudukkari. Nichseyam, onakkumun sandhadikum devan kayukupaa. Ndakayuvathinavukkak kattar odhuviseyamudiyai, oru arputamana saila nappitha, avarle thukivudukamudiyai, oru visayillarupporadi joomanuva.